I'd like to call this Freeburg Community High School District 77 Board of Education meeting to order. Would you please call the board?
Mr. Parrish?
Here.
Mrs. Staub?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Mr. Madrell?
Here.
Mr. Haas?
Mrs. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Gouge?
Here.
Ms. Marler?
Here.
It's warm. Please rise for pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, in universal liberty and justice for all. Okay. Do we have any agenda changes this evening? We do not. At this time, do we have any public comments?
None.
Okay. All right, we've all had a chance to look at the Senate Agenda. I have a motion to approve the Senate Agenda this evening. So move.
I'll second.
Mike?
I'll second, if I can answer.
I think you will start with you.
Aye.
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 Aye. Do we have any committee reports this evening?
Well, the building grounds first, but we're gonna hold off on a discussion about that until the board meeting.
Strategic meeting, we had a meeting before the meeting today. We discussed the vision statement. The board went over some suggestions that were given. Some were updated a little bit. We have four statements that we're gonna send out to the community as a whole and allow them to go down what they feel fit for school. We will also have another meeting before the April school board meeting.
Okay. All right. It's time for the student members' report.
Okay, so I'm gonna start with track. So track is off to a really good start. Both teams have a lot of participants and the runners have been working hard in early season workouts. And their first meet is an indoor meet next Friday night at Illinois College. And most sports right now are in the middle of tryouts or like they're going into tryouts. So girls soccer, they're looking forward to an exciting season too. Their tryouts start Monday, but the girls have been working on offseason speed and agility along with getting used to the current temperatures. And their season is set to start on March 11th. For softball, the softball season also starts on Monday. Ms. Meath, the new coach, looks to continue the success that the program has had under Coach Howe's the past few seasons. For baseball, baseball tryouts begin February 25th with varsity opening up the season March 13th and 14th in the prep baseball report showcase in O'Fallon and Edwardsville. For boys basketball, boys basketball is in its final week of their regular season. They are 19 to 11 and just beat Columbia, at Columbia High School, so that's like a really big deal because that hasn't happened in a long time. And they're hosting regionals next week and start on Monday, February 25th at 6:00 PM versus Cahokia. Winter Guard is having a really good season too. They have placed first in both of their competitions that they've had so far, so they're on a roll. Scholar Bowl, Scholar Bowl's regular season ended last week with two conference wins over Breeze Central and Wesleyan, and they have two tournaments in the coming weeks, the Cahokia Conference Tournament and the IHSA Regional. Wise Team, so Wise Team, we competed against other schools earlier this month, taking tests to see who would get better scores. And in chemistry, there was a first place tie between Chloe Jansen and Chris Patton. In physics, Blake Hatter won first. In English, there was a first place tie between Ellie Eichenlob and Allison Mead. And in biology, Freeburg swept all the awards with Ellie Eichenlob coming in first, Katie Colberg coming in second, and Chloe Hamilton in third. And Blake and Katie will be advancing to the next round. Prom Committee has started up and they have decided that the theme for this year's prom is gonna be midnight masquerade featuring prizes for the best masquerade masks. And the colors will be red, gold, black, and white. For student council, student council's trivia night a few weekends ago raised $2,000 for Allison Higgins, a student at Freeburg Grade School born with hydrocephalus, which was more than we expected, so it was a really good turnout. And they are also getting ready for the Mr. Midget Male Beauty Pageant that will be held this year on March 8th. The first round just ended recently narrowing down the contestants who raised a tremendous amount of money for the prom at around $3,500 from 12 to 8. Football, so even though they're not in season right now, several of the players and the coach received recognition for all area small schools, so this is just like all the people with that one. Tanner Little, Brendan Meng, and Nick France received first team all area football. Cal Lawson received second team all area, and Tyler White received an honorable mention. Also Jacob Carmack received first team all area defensive. Zach Puff receiving second team, and Corbin Key and Logan Brown receiving honorable mention. And then Coach Stewart was also recognized, receiving Coach of the Year for all area small schools. And then finally for art, the art department is heading into scholarship and art contest season, and they will be participating in the Congressional Art Contest at SWIC and Art on the Square. So that's all what's going on around the school right now.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Thank you. Principals' report.
I want to add some more good news to Catherine's report. We had three students compete in the National Poetry Outlaw Contest. So they go to SWIC, they have to practice reciting a poem, they have to say it in front of a panel of judges, and our kids did really outstanding. This is sponsored by Natalie Westbucker and Aaron Asher, and the three kids that went to recite this year were Rachel Leiker, who's a senior, Gabby Wooler, who is a senior, and Amaris Miller, who is a freshman. So it's pretty impressive, so good job to those kiddos. Couple things, we are, have been working with a variety of the city, the fire department, the police department, and put together this kind of task force committee to not just prepare and help prepare schools for crisis and evacuation, but what happens in the town? What happens, you know, are things shut down? How do parents pick up their kids? You know, how can parents contact the school? Where are they gonna be located? This has been weeks in the planning. We've been going over to City Hall to meet, and we are ready to go together a big community informational meeting that's gonna be pretty much led by Chief Schutzenhofer and Joe Bellaboll from the Narcotics Division. But they have a whole plan set up for everything. One of the biggest complaints with these school evacuations and crisis situations is the hours upon hours it takes for people to get their kids for notification, you know, where is everybody located? And, you know, everything from the town being shut down and no traffic going in and out, and where do they set up triage, and where do they set up press, and where do they set up all these things? And this is gonna be a presentation that's gonna be held at Freeburg High School, and that's gonna be on March 14th at 7:00 PM. We're gonna be putting an article in the paper next week to notify parents. Freeburg Grade Schools is gonna be putting it on their website, we're gonna be putting it on ours, we're gonna be making all calls. There's just a lot of really good information, and it's, you know, we practice all the time of what we need to do in schools, but how does the community need to be ready for these kind of things too that you hope and pray they never happen, but we think this is a really good step forward in, you know, getting our community involved in what's gonna be best for our students and our kids. And it's not just acts of violence. I mean, if there's an evacuation because of a gas leak, if there's an evacuation because there's a fire, you know, where do we transport the kids? Where do the parents pick up the kids? You know, you've got all kinds of, you know, factors that go into that. So we'll be putting out the information, and again, that will be at the high school on March 14th at 7:00 PM. State testing is gonna be coming up on April 9th, and I know we've talked a little bit about this. We're changing how we're doing this this year, so the ninth grader testing is PSAT 8-9 test. Sophomores are PSAT 10. Juniors will be doing the SAT, which is our accountability test, and then also they can use those sports for college. We're sending the seniors on a field trip. This is the first time it's kind of been announced publicly, the teachers know about it. Brook Place had some contacts at McKinley Riverplex, so they've got a really good minimal fee for the kids, the seniors, to go, to go ice skating, to go swimming, to have a huge gymnasium activities for the kids, and then she's putting together with senior parents a hot lunch for the kids at the park afterwards. So it's kind of a last senior get-together hurrah, they're out of the building while we do all the testing. All the testing's gonna be in the building. One hallway's gonna be freshmen, sophomores, juniors gonna be another spot. Teachers are gonna help prompt the test. Ann Minor and John Young have done a lot of work prepping for this, and they're gonna take the teachers to the training. And so instead of disrupting three days of school to get all this done, we're gonna do it all in one day. So hopefully it'll be a really good experience, and hopefully the seniors will have a really good experience with that, and we'll get our testing and take care of business. So that'll be April the 9th. Class meetings were held last week, and this is when you know the year is flying by because we met with the freshmen, the sophomores, the juniors, they got their registration papers, they're picking classes, talking to parents, getting those things lined up. It really goes fast from here. So parents, everything should be turned in now, and we'll go through the process of getting everybody scheduled, how many sections, who's gonna teach what, and we'll hopefully have all that lined up here in April and May and start getting information out to the teachers. Accuplacer next generation testing, so it's been a week since I've turned this in, so there's been some changes with this. But for kids going to SWIC, and we have usually about, between probably 45, 50% of our kids will end up going to SWIC their first year, they have to take an accuplacer replacement test in order to get, you know, what level of English, what level of reading, what level of math. Well, that test has changed. At first it was an accuplacer, and then there was gonna be departmental standards, and they threw those out, and then they gave what's called the Accuplacer Next Gen Test. But we sent our first group of seniors to go take it, and none of them made it into anything above remedial reading and English because of the cut scores are so high. And the kids are all freaking out, and Mrs. Westbucker's like, I can't believe this. Even kids that placed high enough on their SAT scores were getting like second level down remedial classes just was not, you know, connecting right way. They've since went back and reviewed the scoring on the test, and they had the numbers wrong in computation, so almost all the kids now are in the English 101. But there's been a lot of false information out there, a lot of panic with the kids thinking they're gonna take all these remedial classes. I'm not gonna lie, I was pretty worried about that too because that kind of information goes in our Illinois State Record Card, and I'm like, there's no way all of these kids didn't, you know, make it into these classes. But that, the cut scores have changed, and kids are where they need to be. Along with that, Running Start, that's the same test that the kids for Running Start take. So they actually took it before our seniors took it, and we only had three kids take it. We had seven show up to the meeting, three decided to follow through and take the test, none of them passed it. And they're all really bright students, so again, we're questioning what is going on. But now, since they've gone back and made the changes, we've got two kids that have decided to move on in that, so we should be good on that. But there's, you know, if you hear things, there's been some misinformation out there, and where's the cut scores, and who's gonna be this in this class, but it sounds like they're getting things lined up, lined out, but you may hear some of that coming out somewhere.
Jill, do you mind if I ask, who they were working with?
Running Start or the seniors?
The testing.
Well, Kelly Vianni is the one that does Running Start, and she's been working with Ann to try to figure out what's going on with these scores. And then whoever, I think somebody in admissions, I can't remember the name that Ann told me, but Ann's been making a lot of calls, and they're like, this can't be right, what's going on, you know, so there's been a lot of changes.
Did you feel, their recognition of what was wrong?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, the first time when the group of seniors took it, I mean, nobody passed it, and then when they went back and looked at and re-did the scores, all but two passed it. So again, there's just, Next Gen was a test, I don't know if they were expecting to use it when they threw out the department standards, but we've been telling all the kids to study the Accuplacer because you can get on the internet, there's practice tests, and we just found out they were getting now what was called Next Gen. So hopefully we've got that lined up. The second group of seniors went through, no problems, so.
This is kind of bizarre.
Scary stuff.
This isn't happening, really.
It was, and when you think about, you know, we have some really good students, and we've got, you know, 98% of them are gonna take remedial classes, it just did not compute. So it wasn't just us. Ballaball East had done theirs the day after us, they had 50 kids that were trying to get in Running Start and only two passed. So they, I mean, it wasn't just our school that was dealing with it, there was a number of schools, and then within the next week they kind of got everything lined back out, so.
There's been a lot of turnover there.
There's a lot of turnover.
There's been turnover, people tired last year.
So a lot of adjunct type, I don't know much of their adjunct professors, not a lot of full-time people, and so, but I think we're all set now, and our kids should be all set to go get on there, so they won't have to take their remedials, which is good. School Purim Day, our last one was February 15th. The presentation that Mr. Breaking sent you was the same one the teacher saw. Joe Bellaboll came out and went through it with the teachers and Mike Schutzenhofer. We haven't done anything for a couple of months, but we're, you know, we're trying to make sure we stay on top of the safety stuff and keep everybody in the frame of mind of what they need to be doing. Any new updates? They talked to us about some new techniques in classrooms and stuff like that, so I think that's really positive for our staff and administration to, you know, continually just stay up on that information. After that, they worked, they had an instructional demonstration, they worked with their instructional coaches, they're working on a curriculum map for each class, updating all the classes to make sure that we're aligned with everything we need. It was a pretty busy day. And that's all I got for you. Thanks.
Any questions or comments? Okay, thank you. Superintendent's report.
All right, give you a quick update on the curriculum audit. Dr. Wamser and Mrs. Diefenbach and I are scheduled to go next week to meet with a consultant from St. Louis University and talk to this person, their background's in curriculum, to talk to them about the possibility of performing this audit, we'll get an idea of what that's gonna run and what it all entails, and report back to you guys about that. The property tax grant that I applied for for the district, we were denied. That was the grant that we could have gotten. Some of our property tax relieved, and it would've been great for taxpayers, but it sounds like they only did the top 20 schools that was known as Tier 1, which is ranked basically worst of the best schools financially. We're in a Tier 2, so we've got a ways to go. So we'll, I'll keep looking at it and see if it's a possibility next year. This past Monday, I did a presentation for the FFA alumni that talks, that I talked to them about the new Ag Center, kind of gave them an idea, showed them the floor plans and the elevations, and I've got those copies of those in your packets. And they were very happy with the fact that that's what that building's gonna become and the possibilities moving forward. And they've actually invited me to the Pork Chop Dinner, I think it's on March 10th, to do a presentation for those in attendance there, so I'll be doing that short presentation there as well. A couple legislative updates. The, as of now, the new law for the minimum wage has been passed. It looks like starting next January, the minimum wage will go up a dollar. Basically goes up a dollar January 1st, then July 1st of 2020, and then every January 1st into 2025, I guess they're gonna get it up to $15. Our immediate impact is pretty minimal here at Freeburg. Our non-certified newer hires are well above the 925, but as we move forward, especially with the newer hires, I think it could affect us probably in a couple years. The other place I think there could be an impact is through OPA, because their employees do not make as much as our starting employees. I don't actually know what their starting salary is, but I can see that being an impact. So that'd be something we'll have to look at when that contract comes up to be renewed. The second part of the legislative update is the, there is no definitive law that's been passed yet for the definition of a school day, which would affect our calendar for next year. It sounds like they're gonna go back to the law that says you have to have a 300 minimum minutes each day to make a school day. So once that's done, then we can amend our calendar. I do have our calendar in here for a final reading, and I'll talk about that when we get there, so it should not be a big ordeal for us. The last thing I think I had in this was, there's a Southwest Division meeting on March 27th, that's the last one for this school year. If you guys are interested in going to that, please let Kendra know. I think I have it here by March 1st, so that's about a week or so. So if you would let her know, that way we can get you registered and go to those. Those are usually pretty good, and you do have to keep up a certain number of hours as board member, and that'll count towards those hours, so that's all I have.
Do you have a sentence?
No, actually I haven't said anything yet. Not yet. It's usually, what, usually like 6:30? There's like a little social like at 6:00, and then 6:30 starts, so I'll find out. Yeah, I'll find out, but I don't remember off the top of my head.
Okay, any questions or comments? Move on to old business.
All right, I had it here, Building and Grounds meeting, action. There is no action. I do have more information about the bus garage later on, that I'll talk more about that, but right now there is nothing to take action on for the Building and Grounds.
Any questions on that? I have a B.
There is no formal action. Auntie talked about what we're gonna do, we're gonna put those four options in the paper, ask people to give us their opinion, and hopefully at the April board meeting, we'll probably try to approve a new vision statement for the district.
Let's move on to I.M.C.
I have reached out to the manager at ATI to try to get a price or a cost for us if we were to have all of the underclass games covered. I have not gotten that information back from them yet. I'm estimating we would have about 35 to 45 underclass games year-round, and I think it's gonna add probably anywhere between $3,000 and $4,000 to the cost. Last year we spent around $12,000, so percentage-wise, that would be a big increase, but I don't have those numbers right now, so once I get those, I'll bring those forward.
Any questions or comments right now?
Flying.
We're flying by. I.M.D.
All right, bus garages, there's a little bit here. So been working with our architect quite a bit on making some decisions. We are on track again to have all of this put together into a packet for the board to review on the 21st of March. The plan is, the architect is going to advertise in the trip next week. The pre-bid meeting is supposed to be, are scheduled for March 6th, the opening for March 19th, usually give them a couple weeks. In your packet, I do have the floor plan for the bus garage, and I also have an east and a west elevation. Those have kind of morphed a little bit just through discussions with the architect. In fact, today we talked about whether we put a ceiling in the restrooms or we leave the ceiling open. Remember, this is about a, I don't know, 12-foot tall, so we've decided to put a ceiling in that allows us to run ductwork and whatnot. And then we also talked about whether we should have square ductwork or the round ductwork like the gym, so there's conversations in it, and I get along very well with Mike, so it's been kind of a nice little banter back and forth. But it's moving forward, the janitors have been working for about a week and a half to clear it out. We did rent, are renting two 20 containers, 20-foot containers from Mr. Haas, and he's gonna deliver another one on Sunday or Monday because we've got that much, that many things in there. And so once that's all done, they'll be able to get inside, get a good estimate of what it's gonna cost, and then move forward. And then we have to find a home for some stuff.
Any questions or comments? Moving on. Okay.
New business.
New business.
All right, Ms. Krunk, met with the curriculum committee meeting, she has some updates. We did not, we're not able to get those until later today, so those are all on your email. Those proposed, so she's gonna go over those proposals. Remember, this is just a first reading, so if there are any changes or anything that we need to talk about, we can make a change between now and section reading.
Okay, I actually sent you two emails. I just forwarded an email to you from our guidance counselor. I want you to kind of take a look at that just for a second, but basically, she's saying that colleges are now asking for a guidance counselor report, and on some of those questions, it basically is about to report disciplinary offenses that have happened at the school. Colleges are now asking for that information. She said that slowly, Illinois College McKinley, they require the counselor's report, so some of that things are on there, so she feels like there's gonna be, needs to be some wording in there that we might need to put in there.
Are we logic about that information?
We're gonna have to ask her.
Right, yeah. So we'll go from there, but I just want to put that out there, just since it was the first reading, kind of put it back in your mind that that might be something that we talk about next month in more detail. Okay, so now you can pull up the 2019 proposed changes. Recommendation number one, this is a current practice already, so all we needed to do was update it in the handbook. I'm not gonna read through this stuff, you guys can, you know, look at that if you want, if you have any questions, but we already do it, so it's not like anything that we need to discuss. Recommendation number two, that, all that took place on that was that the guidance counselor wanted to just make that language just a little bit more detailed just for clarification as far as homebound students are concerned. Recommendation number three, again, this is a current practice, we just want to make sure we put it in there, this was approved last year, we just, it was too late to put it in the handbook, so again, that's what we're doing. This is new language. My recommendation number four is ID badges. Basically, we needed to put language in there about new ID badges that students will be wearing next year. Put some language in there about students have to wear it whenever they come in the building, they have to have it on at all times. If, you know, a teacher or SH employee asks for that, to look at their ID badge, they have to show it, it has to be worn around the neck. So basically, it's gonna allow them to purchase anything from the cafeteria, okay, so it'll stand to us other purposes than when we've done ID badges before. They will be able to use it for checking out books in the library or anything like that, and then also just for identification purposes. So it was one of the things that was discussed in one of the safety committee meetings about being able to identify students and things like that. They thought it was a good thing for us to have, so. Recommendation number five, physical education uniforms. You guys know we went to uniforms last year, $15, and then in the student, in the classroom rules, if a student needs a rental, it's a dollar fee. So it was brought to the handbook committee, we thought that it needed to go in the handbook because there is a $1 fee for that rental fee that will automatically be charged to students' accounts, so we wanted to make sure that we put that in there so that wasn't a surprise for anyone. Because I know I received a phone call from a parent, and understandable, I mean, I feel like if something has to do with money, it should be put in the handbook and not just in the classroom rules. Recommendation number six, excused absence. This is just new required language from the Illinois Way Standards. They have a handbook, and these are recommendations that they made because these are possibly laws that have been passed, and we just had to update that information. Am I moving too fast?
No.
Okay. Recommendation number seven, okay, so this might be a little discussion, this is about detention. Last year it was brought to the committee, the handbook committee members that teachers and students thought that it would be more of a punishment if students were taken away from their classmates during lunchtime. That hasn't been the case. If you look down here on the rationale, last year referrals at this time, I had 291, this year I have 381. So obviously, that's not doing anything with, you know, turning them from getting in trouble or anything like that. I would like to take it back to where it was last year in the handbook, where we had before and after-school detention, before-school starting at 7:30, after-school starting at 3:15. It's 30 minutes for one detention. I just think it's gonna be easier all around for everybody, and I think if parents are involved and have to drop their kids off or pick their kids up, I think that's gonna have more of an impact, how that student's probably gonna behave at school. That's my theory. I could be wrong. Any thoughts on that?
Cost of the change?
Cost of the change?
They supervise them now.
Right, we have three, they supervise three lunches, we have three teachers, every day.
So we have three half-hours now, and we'll go to two half-hours over in a day.
I think you don't have to deal with it, you're, if that's your recommendation, and it obviously hasn't deterred them at all, so I think we go with what you recommend.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. Recommendation number eight, Saturday school. I just took that completely out of the handbook because it's no longer a practice. You know, when we had Saturday school, I would send kids into Saturday school, and they'd look right at me and they'd go, I'm not coming, I'll serve an ISS on Monday, which kind of helped with making sure we had a full-time ISS instructor. So I, if they're at that point, I just put them in in-school suspension for the day where they have a supervisor there to help them with all the work that they need to get completed and done. Saturday school, we had to hire a teacher to come up here, the schedule was from 8:00 to 11:00. If no student showed up, we still had to pay that teacher $100 for being there. So this, I think, is way more cost-efficient, so I just took it out because I need to remove the handbook for all the new language. Otherwise, we'd get charged for the handbook for all the new language. Otherwise, we'd get charged per page. Okay, recommendation number nine, Chromebooks. The only thing we did on this is that we took out any other time. Chromebooks is not in use for the class. They can actually bring them in here and charge them. Kids are leaving the classroom way too much to come and charge their Chromebook. So we've completely taken that out. Those can be shoved off, except for before-school, at lunches, and after-school. And Mr. Alt even talked about setting a station up in the cafeteria, so when students are in there at lunch, they can just bring their Chromebooks in there and charge them. So. Recommendation number ten, this is about drugs, and basically, we got a lot of new language from the state on things that we needed to change, so I kind of brought it down in more detail. But the one major change is, A, if you look, I've kind of highlighted that in purple, where it talks about, we added cannabis hashes, and then it says medical cannabis unless the student is authorized to be administered a medical cannabis infused product under Ashley's law. Ashley's law says that a student can have the administered marijuana here at school, on school grounds, but it has to be through either a physician or a parent can administer that. So that's where that has now come into place. So that wording needs to be in the handbook.
The nurse can do it?
Hmm, I don't think it said the nurse was on there. No, it said by a physician or a parent. And of course, they'd have to bring documentation and all those kinds of things into the school, but that was-
Medicinal marijuana.
Yeah, medicinal marijuana, sorry. Medicinal marijuana. And then I highlighted on B, where again, it just needed to go under there as far as Ashley's law where the possession of medicinal cannabis for every student, okay, that has been prescribed, we have to have some type of notification here at the school. And again, it can be used here on school grounds under Ashley's law, so consider it a prescription drug. And then again, I just kind of cleaned things up, because they listed more things in detail, so I listed those. I thought that was easier than having it in paragraph form, and I added things to the language that they had in their handbook, that the way it should be working. So that's that change. And then tobacco, recommendation number eleven. Again, I just changed the wording so it matched the standard state handbook. Some discussions that have been brought up, you guys know that there's a jewelry, vaping that's been going on here at school. It's to the point where I'm having complaints from students that say they cannot go into the restroom because someone's in there juuling. It's a problem everywhere. It's not just here. Ms. McQuiston sent me some links that talked about how schools are now being very proactive, and they're getting the city involved, where there's a fine on some, like a student that's under eighteen years of age, there's actually a fine, because it's illegal to use tobacco products if you're under the age of eighteen. So why? Because they're in the school, should that be any different? You know, if a student gets caught with a jewel, basically what happens is the parent has to come pick them up after school, and they have to go straight to the police station, and they have to pay a fine. I think for the first time, it's like fifty dollars and like twenty-five hours of community service, or their second fine, it goes up to like seventy-five dollars, and then, you know, fifty hours of community service, which is all done with the city. So I called several schools and basically just got a little feedback to kind of get us started on it. Obviously, nothing has to be determined tonight by any means, but they've gone, the principals and assistant principals I've talked to said they've gone to the city council, and they've had, they've go to about two meetings, and then they kind of, you know, see where the city council wants to go with it, if this is something they want to help with or not, and then we move forward. I know some of the schools that I talked to was Waterloo, Mato Metro East, and then they, from there, they told me that Mascula does it, Highland does it, and so several schools in their conference have gone to this. One guy said he had thirty referrals in his first semester, and as of right now, we're at twenty-nine students that's been caught juuling. So, and that's not even comparison to, I feel like, what's actually happening. You know, if you've got students coming to you and saying, "I can't even get into a bathroom stall," I think that's a serious problem. So, just kind of put it back in your mind, something we can discuss and talk about. Again, I've just kind of started the research on it. I'm obviously in favor. I mean, I hope the city will be in favor, but having talked to them or anything like that, I just wanted to run that fast, you guys, so you kind of, you know, understand, kind of, it is a problem here. It's a problem everywhere, and they've now gone to a different alternative for this one, so.
When you catch people with things like that, you confiscate.
Yeah, but now, parents can come and pick that product up, or, you know, if it's a jewel or a vaping pen, parents can come pick it up, but a lot of times, they don't. I mean, they don't know their kid was using it. Some parents didn't even know what it was, so I have a tutorial. So, and they said, they actually said, people that I talked to said they took a box that they had and took it to the city council and said, you know, here's, here's what they are, here's what they're used for, you know, so. You guys have anything, questions? I can try to answer anything that I've researched on so far. Okay. Recommendation number thirteen, that is just, the only thing that's changed on that is the fee has gone up from four thousand seven-hundred-twenty-four to four thousand seven-hundred-and-fifty-six. Recommendation number fourteen, this was just, the only thing that we added in there is on A, that it's given to ninth graders in the spring as well. And then recommendation number fifteen, registration of students. Again, that's just wording, where it says, where it used to say that, you know, we would have it in August for each class. It's for all students, like we have a period for all students, like it's not just a set date when we have registration. That's correct, right, Joe?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so again, that's just wording. Recommendation number sixteen, again, this is just a few changes that have taken place with the curriculum, where we added college statistics, and, and that's basically all that we have in there for that. So again, just so you know what's been changed. Recommendation number seventeen, exemption policy. Again, it just changed it from AP classes to any weighted classes. Recommendation eighteen, Ms. Meyer had a chance to take a look at this, and she thought the way that it looked in the handbook was just really confusing. So what's in red is what it will actually look like, and I agree with her. I think it's much easier if you're a parent and you're looking at that. That's much easier to understand, so that's a recommendation. Number nineteen, recommendation, this is National Honor Society, and I'm gonna let Ms. Joe talk a little bit about this one.
I've been talking with Mark Miller, who's the sponsor, and I've been talking with Anne Minard about this, and about the number of kids that could apply for National Honor Society. And we, four-point-two-five is the National Honor Society recommendation, but schools could actually have a higher GPA than that, and most of the schools in our conference definitely have that. With a GPA of four-point-two-five with all the weighted classes that we offer, we could potentially have a hundred-plus kids apply for National Honor Society. And then it becomes a very subjective selection, because there's a committee, and I know that that has been an issue with a parent here, a parent there, this parent, you know, why is my kid does all this extra, you know, curricular that they're not on, and you just, I mean, there's just been a slew of problems with that. So we've been talking about, how can we make this, first of all, more elite selection, because it should be to have that kind of recognition? And number two, how can we increase community service within our students? That's been a discussion for a long time, because we don't have any kind of element that requires kids to do community service. So we kind of are looking to fill two rivers with stone with this, or, is it one? Anyway, with this, we would like to increase the cutoff. You have to have at least a four-point-seven-five on a five scale. It's more of an A average versus a B average, and then along with it, they have to do the application process, they have to maintain the GPA, and as a first-year person, they would have to complete twenty hours of community service work, and then be inducted into the National Honor Society. As a second-year member, they would have to still maintain GPAs, and they would have to then complete fifteen hours as a senior to remain in National Honor Society. We feel like that if we're gonna be getting recognition for this, that it needs to be people that are very serious about the leadership, all three pillars of it, the leadership aspect, the community service, and scholarship aspect of it. You know, along with that, there's been some stuff in there, we've cleaned up a little bit too, that, you know, if you are supposed to be one of those, you know, those three things, and all of a sudden, you're getting suspensions and cheating, that those are also not behaviors that should be National Honor Society worthy, and their kids could be removed for that. We just feel like we need to have a stronger selection for this. It wouldn't be based on a committee. It would be GPA and the actual community service hours to be inducted. We feel like that would alleviate a lot of the teacher selection, and take away the whole, well, my kid's got this, and this, and this, and the subjectiveness of it, and make it more clear-cut. So I kind of really like your thoughts on that. We don't have any community service elements. Most schools do. At least seniors have to do some kind of project. This way, we have kids that would have to do a contract, keep track of hours. They can go out to the park, they can go out to this here at the school, their churches, and put, really put some time in that gives some meaning behind what this means to be a National Honor Society member.
I think you're just strengthening the quality of the recognition.
I would take that.
Makes it even something.
Yes, and just take that out of it, and just, you know, and if it's, if it's that important to me, they want to use it for college, they want to use it in their background, and they want to use it on their applications, well then you need to put in time to do it. And giving that to the community, I think, whether we do it through National Honor Society or any other means, I think it's important that our students do more of that. I see a lot of our sports teams doing that, so many hours, but I think we can get more kids involved.
The only question I would have is, are you gonna define community service?
Yes. I have a number of different community service contracts that I've looked at, that I'm gonna put together with Mr. Miller and Ms. Minard. They would have to have a contract for each place they're gonna do the service. The person would have to sign the contract of what they're gonna be doing, and then they're gonna have a log too, that they're gonna have to turn in of hours. So, I want it to be, and I also feel like it needs to be on the kids to go out and find their places for community service. I don't want to put this on Mr. Miller to find a placement for fifty kids. I think they can advocate for themselves as a seventeen and eighteen-year-old kid, and go to their church, go to their, you know, businesses, go to their parks, go, and what can we do? So, I would just like to see us increase what we're doing here.
And that's twenty hours for the whole year?
Twenty for the whole year.
Okay.
And, you know, we talked about the hours on that, and you could do more hours, but then I think about, we have a lot of kids that are doing one, two, some three sports, working jobs. You know, I felt like twenty hours was fair. We would start this process in September. The induction ceremony is in February, so September, October, November, December, January, February, five months to get it in, along with other obligations. I felt like that was a fair number. And then fifteen hours to remain in the next year. So, again, I welcome any thoughts you have, GPA, number of hours.
Again, back to the, what you were talking about, what you were gonna come up with, so whatever this clarifying sheet is contract, I think you're already something in there, call it a one-seventy-five B, or whatever you're gonna call it, and put that in along with it.
Okay.
That's the criteria to get that.
Okay.
Credit. So no gains.
Right.
Just gain.
Yeah, I know, and I keep thinking about that too. I just want to make sure that this is legitimate, and, you know, if we're gonna do this, I feel like we need to do it all the way and do it the right way. So, the kids being out in community also represent their school, and we want them to do a good job.
Ms. Miller, what do you think of this?
I think, like, it's a really good idea. A lot of the people that last year went to try out, like, so many of my classmates made it in, that knowing them like I do, I don't know if they necessarily are the best people for NHS, not to say that all of them, like, most of the people that got in should be in it, but I definitely think, like, a stronger requirement list would be good.
I think it's a good idea.
Well, and I think I would have liked the community service thing, because, I mean, I do community service, but I think it's, I think it would have been nicer to be, like, forced to get this many hours, because then you can put it on college applications and stuff. So, I would like that.
Thank you.
Okay, recommendation number twenty. Basically, it just went from AP biology to college biology. Recommendation twenty-one, it went from taking out chemistry to anatomy and physiology. Recommendation twenty-two, this is a current practice. I mean, it just hasn't been changed in the handbook, but instead of honors banquet, it's honors night. And basically, you know, honor the students with all the department honors and outstanding students for their awards, and also, parents, student, you know, they don't have to pay a fee. I think now they, they serve deserved there, so there's no fee involved in that at all. So just cleaning that up. Recommendation number twenty-three. Okay, this is about students brought to the handbook committee, that they would like to take out clothing with holes in it. They would like to be able to wear holes in their jeans, and I want to say that students brought it to the table because it is a fashion, and most jeans have holes in them, and a majority of the group have no problem with this recommendation, so.
I think we'd like to hear your recommendation. What, how do you feel about, as the person who you're for?
Well, I said Mr. Parrish was gonna kill me, because he was supporting me last year for sure about this. I don't know, I, maybe they're wearing me down. I don't know, but it's just, it isn't a lot of clothing. Can you buy jeans without holes in them? Absolutely. But the parents in, in the committee said they have, you know, no problem with it, but a lot of the jeans they buy for their kids do have holes in them. I'm at the point where I feel like, if it's a disruption to the learning environment, then, you know, then that will be turned in by a teacher. You know, if it's so bad that it's inappropriate, that, you know, it's a dress code violation, and they get sent to the office for anything else that's inappropriate, so that's where, I think that's where I'm at with it.
And most of the jeans we're talking about, it's not like they have a jean in their entire thighs hanging out.
No.
It's just, it's all, I don't know what you call it, ratted up, and then it has something underneath. And I, I would just say, what I kind of whispered to Mr. Parrish is, that I also think too, we gotta think big picture of what, why we're here, and chasing kids around about holes in their jeans seems to spend, we spend, could spend way too much time on that, and there's probably a better way to spend our time.
I see your face.
I'll go with your recommendation, but I also think big picture, if it's about education, if my boys are hot after the girls with the jeans that are all tore up, that are showing more skin that they need to be shown, I know the first ones are gonna be fine, but then the next girl's gonna have even more, or they're gonna be on the back of the thigh, or whatever. It's just, give an inch, they take a mile, is what I've seen. I will go with the recommendation. Do what I-
The poor jean we chase into the girl.
I can give our boys a little more credit.
I do have one thing you know-
Oh, seriously, Angie, you've never, you're not a boy. Just look at us, put it that way.
Um, I actually-
Take it, be honest with me.
Okay, there's like several senior boys right now that, well, I don't know about other grades, but I know that senior boys right now, I have friends that wear holes in their jeans, and they don't get said anything to, and it's not a distraction at all. And girls wear shorter shorts than the holes would be anyway, and I think that would be more of a distraction than, like, holes that it would be-
I agree, we should give them those too. Is that what you're getting at, Catherine? Great idea. That is great, Catherine says.
But, those are my points. That's all.
Again, this is a first reading. Changes can be made between now and the next reading.
That is correct.
Then after the question is, do you better probably manage it?
Well, we're managing it the other way.
I know.
And it's, it's gotten to the point where we think we're spending way too much time on this, and we feel like we should be able to spend more time on something else.
I wasn't sure, based on what you said, by the way. You meant you didn't want to allow this for the community?
No, no, I, to me, this is one of these things that, yeah, there's gonna be kids that are gonna push the limits, but they push the limits with the dress code now, and so we have to address it. I mean, there's been other things that we've had in the dress code that we've kind of eliminated a little bit, you know, types of shoes or whatever. And it just, you know, the thought was, you know, that's a lot of time spent on things that doesn't really matter in the educational process.
Okay, and last one, recommendation twenty-four. This was actually brought up in the curriculum committee meeting about PE exemptions. I did word it a little differently, where I added medical limitations and religious objections, because those were recommended nation, or, recommendation from the overall Illinois State Handbook, so I added that. And then one of the things that was brought up was that a student needs a specific class for college admission and cannot fit- and cannot fit into his or her schedule without waiving PE. For an example, enrolled in six other classes, not study hall or teacher's aid. So what that means is that if you are in, you cannot have a study hall and you cannot be a teacher's aide if you do not have PE in your schedule, is basically what it kind of comes down to. Because PE is a state requirement, but there are exemptions, you know. If you're in athletics, if you're in marching band, if you have a medical reason or if you have a religious reason, reason, those are all, you know, in the PE waiver through the state law. So that was what they brought to the curriculum committee and this is kind of what was discussed out of that, so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Need a motion to approve the first reading?
So moved.
Second.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item B.
All right, this is the final approval for the school calendar for next year. As I mentioned earlier, the law is still in limbo. So the only changes that I've made from when I presented this in January was the three dates in October that there could be parent-teacher conferences, which is, I don't remember, October twenty-first, twenty-third, twenty-fifth. So I just have to be determined on those. And, and once the law gets put in place, we'll figure out what we'll do. We did survey the teachers, that if the law does change, would they prefer to have two evening parent-teacher conferences and have Friday off? Or would they rather have one parent-teacher conference and then have a, a parent-teacher conference on Friday morning? They, they felt like it would be better and to have it, the two evenings, thought more parents would show up. So that's probably the direction we're leaning if the law goes back to the way it is, so. Otherwise, it's unchanged from what we talked about January.
Any questions or comments on that? If not, we'll need a motion to approve the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty FCHS school calendars presented. Let me. You get a second?
Second.
Second, by Dean. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item C.
Uh, this is, it's time that we kind of get started on the selection process for the student board member for next year. And if we have a board member that would like to volunteer to serve on that, basically what you would do is you would come in and sit in on interviews and help select the member for next year or make the recommendation to the board for the member for next year. So if anybody would like to do that, it would more than likely be during the day so kids can, well, actually, we do it right after school so that the kids can not have to miss.
I would just, I've done that for about a year, it's a very rewarding process. Recommend it to anybody.
Okay, do we have a volunteer for this?
I'll give it a try.
Thank you, Dean.
I'll just make sure you're in line.
Item D. Um, this is something that came out, we've been talking about. I know I've had a couple of board members talk to me, but the rubberized, the red rubberized surface on the track is showing wear and tear. And that track surface was supposed to last seven, eight years. The track was put in around two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, so we're right. We're pretty close to the seven to eight years. So we are in need of replacing or respraying the top surface. It's a polyurethane coating, it goes over a black rubberized coating. A couple of concerns, if you don't do that, you start to get into that black rubberized substrate is what I'm calling it. And that cost to repair that is probably twice the cost to repair the red rubberize. The cost to have it resprayed is about a hundred thousand dollars. So it's not cheap, but it is needed. Diane, Coach Law and I sat down with a representative from Vernon Jones last Friday. Vernon Jones is who put the track in, I should say, who sprayed the track originally and has done all the repairs since then. We've been very happy with Vernon Jones. Vernon Jones is a member of what's called the TIPS co-op. This is a co-op that vendors can join. The co-op basically goes out and bids all these projects and comes up with a price. And then whoever the vendors are have to meet that price in order to be able to bid these projects. Vernon Jones is a local, they're, they're over in St. Louis, they're less than an hour away. So by going to the co-op, the, the price is set. We've gone through all the bidding issues that, that you would typically go through on a big project like this. What I am interested in doing is, they've sent us an agreement. I've sent that, put that in your board packet. I would like to move forward and have Vernon Jones spray this. That this meets all of the Illinois laws. I think I put that in your packet too, it kind of summarizes what the law says. We, we very much like Vernon Jones, feel very comfortable with them, they've done a great job. Takes about a month to do this. It's about a week-long process to, to seal all the field and the bleachers so they're gonna overspray and then they have to come back and line it. And the lining is done by specialized people from all, I don't know, there's eight in the country or something that only do this, so. This money would come out of the fiscal year twenty budget, so the next year's budget. And as I, we've mentioned before, there is some money in the working cash, but then we also build in extra money into the building grounds each year for projects and improvements. So we would be able to pay for this project out of those two funds that, that we're not gonna have to touch after that. Or for other things, I should say. So, any other questions?
I got a couple of questions. There are some areas out there that are, that need to be repaired. Is that not tiresome, that's not getting taken care of?
They'll use the same rubberized material in a caulk form and they'll caulk all that first. There's some, I believe there's some cracking.
I know there's some cracking where the big entry is.
Yeah.
And there's some more cracking out of the southwest corner on the outside. And I'm thinking all that cracking that's, that's being formed as you come into every way. Because I think it's being caused by the gator that's bringing it in when they come in and make that turn. I think it's for stress on the surface and causing it to separate. That's my theory.
I'll ask about that, but the, the gator is one of the vehicles they, that shouldn't cause it. It's light now. A big truck, they said we shouldn't have.
I can see it's light enough, but if you're going in a little too fast and making a short corner, I think it could wear that.
I'll, I'll, we'll check into it, no, we'll check into it and if, if that's an issue, then we'll make some adjustments. Well, it, I mean, that's what actually pulls the groomer around.
Or the football coach. Well, you just cross it, but.
Yeah.
But that, that stay off, stay off the track. I was gonna ask the same question, not necessarily about the way they're turning coming in, but just seeing them driving up and down all the time, just the stress of stopping fast or anything. And then, I think you answered my question, it's, it is, but.
Yeah, there's, there's funds to pay for it. It'll, you know, this wasn't something that I had really thought about. But it is something we need to do because I don't want to get into that black rubberized substrate. I mean, I, I mean, he's. It, that should last indefinitely, I mean, as long as we keep this top. And so, you know, the, it'll cover all the red areas, so it should be good for another seven or eight years. And, and nobody asked it, but they told us the turf was somewhere between, between ten and twelve years. And, and they told us our turf is in really good shape. We'll probably look into having another service done this year, which is about a four or five thousand dollar cleaning. And then they, we, we actually, we found a whole bag of rubber in there in the bus garage. Jimmy Hall's is somewhere in there, I'm not sure where, but, 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 so we do have some extra rubber. So when they come out, they'll actually use that and, and help fill in, so. But it just, it's one of those things that takes a little bit of maintenance.
This, what you're talking about here is correct, right?
This is just the red, the red surface is on the track.
So how's the other field, or the rest of the field, how does that play out in the next few years?
The turf. So the turf is, they said somewhere between ten and twelve years when they put it in.
It's different, it's different.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. And then, there, there isn't really maintenance on the track except for minor repairs. But the turf, we have to groom and we also have to do a cleaning every other year or so. And I think the last one we had is when we had the vandalism, which was a couple of years ago. And so we're due, so we'll probably schedule that for sometime this summer. And, and what they do is they bring a big machine out, it, it has a magnet that pulls up any kind of metal. I don't know if I, you remember, we, we actually got like two five-gallon buckets of metal from helmets and whatever else. But then they'll also probably put some more rubber in there because that, you know, gets compacted. But that's what you have to do to the turf.
I didn't realize they're different, true. I thought it was all the same.
No.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, we need a motion to approve the contract.
I would move to approve the contract, we've done it.
Vernon Jones.
Vernon Jones to respray my track.
Second. We'll all call this, we'll start with you, Mike.
Aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, do we have any more correspondence this evening?
Uh, no.
Any exempt items?
No.
Do we have a reason to go into closed session?
We do, for personnel and possible personal property.
Okay. Do you need a motion to go into closed session?
So who?
Mr. Gav?
Second.
Stop. Start with you, Ms. Pedrol.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, closed session. Thank you all for coming this evening. So, me? We're ready for you.
I move to hire Tiffany Sonnenberg as a specialized key, as a special education teacher for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year.
So moved.
Second. Start with Ray.
Aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
I move to hire Heather Nancy as an English teacher for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year.
No move.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Motion passes.
And I move to accept the resignation of Mr. Randy Reichert as the assistant boys' football coach.
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Is that all we have for this evening? Okay, we need a motion to adjourn. You're up.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, say aye.
We have aye.
You guys all seem like you would stay.